Good morning, guys. Today is June 3, 2021, and today will be the induction of our BWS officers for our Board of Trustees. Watch and enjoy the video.
The long-term success and sustainable development of any organization fundamentally depends on God's governance. The high-quality support, challenge, and strategic direction provided by our board is something every institution, organization, crisis, and relies upon. His Excellency, Most Reverend Archbishop S. U. T. D., Bishop of the Diocese of Taguilaran, our wholesome, dynamic, and indefatigable City Mayor, Honorable John J. Snow Bagooyang II, respected Assistant Schools Division Superintendent, Dr. Cassiana Cabernet, our honorably, the newly-elected members of the Board of Trustees and their ladies, honorable Betty Toralba, the only lady member of the Board, the other members of the BOT with their ladies too, except for the single one. The administrative team of BWS, headed by our faithful and compassionate Sir Ralph H. Deloso, competent and dedicated members of BWS, the non-teaching staff, ladies and gentlemen, a pleasant and blessed morning to everyone. Ta chao. Chao shao.
Our honored guests, Bishop of the Diocese of Taguilaran, Most Reverend Alder K. Uy, Mayor of Taguilaran City, Honorable Mayor John J. Snow Bagooyang II, Taguilaran City's School Division Superintendent, Dr. Joseph R. Navara, represented by our Assistant School Division Superintendent, Dr. Cassiana Cabernet, with her is the Senior Education Program Specialist, Dr. Esther El Capas, our very active and supportive servant leaders, the Board of Trustees of Bohol Wisdom School, headed by Engineer Albert M. Uy, dynamic members of the administrative team of Bohol Wisdom School, our talented and dedicated faculty members and staff. Friends, ladies, and gentlemen, good morning. Chao shao. Ecclesiastes chapter 4, verses 9 to 12 says, and it quote, "Two are better than one because they have a good return for their labor. If either of them falls down, one can help the other out. But pity anyone who falls and has no one to help him out. Also, if two lie down together, they will keep warm. But how can one keep warm alone? Though one may be overpowered, two can defend themselves. A cord of three strength is not quickly broken." According to an author, Chris Radford, "Only by binding together as a single force will we remain strong and uncounterable." These two powerful statements reflect what Bohol Wisdom School practices: collaboration, which has greatly contributed to the culture of excellence in the field of education, not only in our province, but even beyond. A type of institution that upholds participatory management in attainment of its vision, mission, and goals to provide transformative education that is geared towards academic excellence and a spirituality that promotes love, respect, integrity, and stewardship, and is committed to produce builders of minds, witnesses to Christ, and servants of the community. BWS is being lent and guided by strong and service-oriented collaborators known as Board of Trustees. All through the years, they have shown heartfelt commitment as they serve the BWS family. As we all know, this school is a non-staff, nonprofit institution, which means the members of the Board of Trustees sincerely and passionately serve Bohol Wisdom School without any renunciation, rendering their heartfelt service as unto the Lord, the greatest master. Today, we celebrate and thank them for them. We consider ourselves so blessed to have them as coworkers within this tenure. With their continued support and unwavering commitment, Bohol Wisdom School remains steadfast in providing quality and excellent service to the community. Guests, friends, ladies, and gentlemen, with gratitude and praise to God, it is my honor and great privilege to present to you our servant leaders, our very own members of Bohol Wisdom School Board of Trustees. May I request the members of the Board of Trustees to occupy the spots hard here on the stage and on the stairs to maintain physical distancing as I mention your name in alphabetical order. At this point, we would like to acknowledge the presence of our very own Vice-Cover Lord, René Villalobos. Give her a round of applause. Again, to start with, we have Engineer Paul N. Lee. Engineer Ma Marson Y. Lee. Engineer Marsha T. Lee. Judge Praise Johnson Y. Lee. Mr. Richard U. Lee. Engineer Jopolo Y. Lee. Mr. Jose R. O. Mr. Raymond G. Ho. Mr. Samson V. Cian. Mr. Ron Hamilton V. Tang. Honorable Alberta C. Dorelba. Engineer Albert M. Uy. Mr. Edeltonso T. Uy. Dr. Vincent Roper L. Yap. And Attorney Wyatt N. Yap Jr. Ladies and gentlemen, a round of applause to the members of the Bohol Wisdom School Board of Trustees. Hey, smile for the picture. Smile with your eyes. Thank you, our dear members of the Board of Trustees, and may I request all the officers of the Board of Trustees to remain on stage for the induction ceremony.
And now, we come to heart this event, the installation of the new officers of the Bohol Wisdom School Board of Trustees. May the Lord, Most Reverend Archbishop Uy...
Please, raise your right hand and follow after me. I thank you, ladies. Having been elected as of the BWS Board of Trustees, do hereby swear to the Lord that to faithfully discharge to the best of my ability the duties and responsibilities of my present position. As servant of the community, I commit myself to help the school and bear true faith and allegiance to the values of the school and promote its philosophical vision, mission, and goals for the good of the entire BWS community and beyond. So help me God. Congratulations. Now, I want to say a prayer, especially for our newly-elected members. Oh, great. For you. We pray and thank you for gathering us together on this beautiful day. We recognize your passion, and we shall continue to love and worship you, for you are our life. Father, gathered before you today are men who are committed to serve you by working for the good of this prestigious institution, the Bohol Wisdom School. Pour out your blessings to each of them, strengthen their hearts and their soul to follow the example of your son Jesus in serving your life. Help us, Father, to redirect our hearts and minds to the purest goal of educating young students of BWS so that they will also learn to love and serve you according to your most holy name. We have this time before you, this day, to offer out our lives to the cause of this calling. For it is you who sowing our hearts, the seed of faith, hope, and love for our fellow men. Constantly pour out your grace, oh Lord, that every day of our lives we will walk your walk, talk your talk, feel as you feel. And from this day forth, we will only be a blessing to people in your sweet and mighty name. We ask all this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen. I thank you, Father, and present all these members.
May I request Bishop David K. Uy to answer for your esteemed officers of the Bohol Wisdom School Board of Trustees.
Peace of this prestigious institution, especially the newly-elected officers of the Board of Trustees, headed by Engineer Albert Uy. Apakan sanap na kailan. Every opportunity to serve is a great blessing from God. As we pray for all of you, we hope that you will take your job seriously and give your best for the betterment of BWS. Please know that by securing good education for the students, you are at a way working and participating with God in his ongoing work of creating and eliminating. The words of Saint Paul is inspiring. In whatever you do, do it with all your heart and do it for God, not for any human masters. Colossians 3, verse 23. My dear officers of the Board, your work and task, if taken seriously, is not going to be easy. It needs a lot of careful deliberation, proper consultation, prayerful discernment, and a lot of hard work. The global pandemic is making all our work today more challenging. Am I correct? We are asked and sometimes forced to find new ways and approaches in the world of education. And for this, I pray that you will not be caught in pursuing the noble aspirations of the great founders of this BWS despite the great challenges of the times. What are some of the great challenges of many schools today? Quite common in many schools today, including our Catholic schools in Bohol, are problems related to poverty, lack of funding, lack of classrooms, and need of competent teachers. These issues, I believe, are not greatly affecting Bohol Wisdom School. Saktobago, di lika'y na isinang naitatok na kamakuliman, no? But there are issues that should cause us more serious concerns. Problems like the impact of technology to the life of our students. You very well know. Technology is helping our students a lot, but it is also causing them a lot of distractions. Not only of distractions, but also of misinformation. Tagaayaw data information sa internet, but not all of them are good and true. So there is the challenge of addressing this problem. Secondly, mental health. Omateka dumuk in the mental health sa una. But it's now a fast-growing problem, and this is a very complex problem. There is no single reason for depression and suicide. Not only that, we also are facing problems regarding to student attitudes and behaviors. Similarly, the gap between teachers and students are getting wider each day. A lot of teachers today are finding it difficult to understand their students, and vice versa. Dilila ang mga teachers na besod, ang mga metingyang isa nagbesod sa buo sa ilang mga teachers. Family partners and denier of leave, dysfunctional families, absentee parents are not major cause of problematic students. And I believe we have a lot of that of those here in BWS. Faith crisis. Of course, we respect one another's faith, but that is not an issue for many of us. An issue na sa ground is the lack of faith in many of our students. So these are present challenges that I just would like to bring to your attention so that you will know how to address them. So this is a challenge that I would like to raise to Albert and to the other members of the Board. I hope by identifying present challenges, you can also make new priorities of the school. Be brave to introduce new programs that will address these new issues and problems. I hope, number one, you can give our students or make sure we are giving them holistic education. We are not, I hope, aiming to produce intellectual giants who are emotionally toward. Taga sa ato, focus tagayo sa IQ, malintana't ang EQ. So please consider this as a priority. Forming students holistically, not only in mind, but also in heart, not only in body, but also in spirit, not only the intelligence, but more so the emotional status of our students. I hope that faith will be a priority for our students. Ayokalintinin 'yung ginoo. Sa daghan mga espirahan karam sa mga first world countries, ang faith, ang religion, giset aside, ang pantang ng mga sacred images. I hope that will not happen here in BWS. I understand that this is a private school. This is not a Catholic school. But I hope and pray that you will always regard God as foundation in everything that we do. Bisan na inna ina't pagkuo, we continue to respect each other, but we always put God as number one in all our priorities. Once again, congratulations. Good morning, everyone. Mabuhay kaming kana.
Thank you so much for your helpful, insightful, and relevant message. Ayokamis all the challenges of your faith. To you that are in need, Bohol Wisdom School, City of Taguilaran, glad appreciation, hereby presented to Most Reverend Archbishop Uy D. In appreciation, his generosity and invaluable service as an induction officer during the induction of officers for the trustees of Bohol Wisdom School, given this third day of June 2021 at Bohol Wisdom School City of Taguilaran, sign, role is Deloso Ma E. Head Administrative Team, and Engineer Albert M. Uy, German Board of Trustees. Adidraan ba, Albert? Thank you so much for your helpful and useful. This time, let's hear the acceptance speech of our newly-installed chairman of the Board of Trustees, Engineer Albert M. Uy.
In behalf of all the elected officers, I would like first to extend our heartfelt gratitude to our fellow trustees for the trust and confidence given to us to serve the Board and the school in our respective mandated capacities. As I was preparing my speech for today, I reflected on the question of what brought me to this prestigious institution, the Bohol Wisdom School. When I was younger, I used to live across the old Bohol Chinese School in downtown Taguilaran. The school used to be my playground, which I frequently visited every Saturdays and Sundays. At a very young age, I used to accompany my late grandfather, Angkong Uy Tong Yong, and my late father, Papa Juan Ahua Uy. And some elders of the Filipino-Chinese community, wherever they had meetings at the school and in their excursions in other towns of the province. Talking along these meetings and trips, I was able to witness firsthand how the elders and members of the Filipino-Chinese community took care of each other as I showed them extended help and support to those in need, especially during pandemias. Sometimes, this narrative is not told enough, that the humble beginnings of the back of the Bohol Chinese School relied heavily on the generosity of the Filipino-Chinese community whose monthly donations sustain the upkeep of each operation and the salaries of the teachers and other employees. The lab where the old school stood was donated by a Filipino-Chinese family, while parts of the land where the school is located today were also donations. Even some classrooms and facilities were built through the benevolence of the Pilipino families from inside and outside the province. Let me say without fear of contradiction, to feel out the compassion and generosity of the Filipino-Chinese family and community, our school would have not existed and grown to what it is today. As we move forward, we must continue to remember what the community has done for us. They say that gratitude is the memory of the heart, and to our forefathers, we thank them. As I pondered on these thoughts, I found my answer to the question of what brought me here. It was kindness, cheer, and generosity, exemplified by our forefathers, and most special to my Angkong Tong Yong and Papa Ahua. They remain inspirations for me to continue the work they have started for the school and the community. In 1924, I was only 25 years old when I replaced my brother, Anya Herbert, to become the youngest member of the BWS Board, a path that led me to serve as treasurer in years past. But then, I would have never imagined being here today, 37 years later. Frankly, I never really aspired to be in this position and became afraid that the inevitable might happen as two of our senior board members were hesitant to be nominated to the position after a series of talks we had. But as God's will would have it, the inevitable did happen. Today, I humbly accept the mandate as Bohol Wisdom School's president and chairman. Let me say my personal thanks to Father Pepe O, who confirmed her time has a day that unfortunately is suffered sometimes. Who is my idol and mentor since our rotary club days, and who was instrumental in my nomination and election as treasurer and chairman. To Father Pepe, thank you for the trust. Let me say it's a promising journey ahead for us. There are 15 members on the Board with an average age of 55 years old. Four of us under 30, three in their 40s, and one in his 50s, and the rest likely TWT's or persons with discounts or simply senior disabilities. Suffice it to say, there is good mix of young and seasoned minds with various experiences and talents. I pray we will work together harmoniously as a team, not only for the school, but also for the Filipino-Chinese community. The Filipino-Chinese community is always included because it has always been the practice that those elected in the BWS Board will also concurrently be the officers of the Filipino-Chinese Chamber of Bohol. So apart from the wisdom school matters in the agenda, we shall also include matters concerning the community from whose efforts built the school in the first place. To our past chairman of the Board, Mr. Visiculutan, Mr. Frederick O., Engineer Marshall D., is here with us today. Tagaan ito siya sa Masipal Patpat. Mr. Maria Uy, Engineer Chupulin D., who I wish is the one standing here. So tagaano to Masipal Patpat, thank you, boy. And the late Doctor Shifisuyak Jr. We thank you all for the leadership you have shown and for steering the Board and the school during your terms. Let us also pray for them, the past chairman, as some of them are battling various health concerns. as some of them are battling various health concerns. And to our immediate past Chairman, late Dr. Bobo, let us pray for the turnaround of hopes of this school. To the school faculty and employees, thank you for your dedicated service to the school and its students. To the Filipino-Chinese community, thank you for your continued support. To Bishop Abet, Governor Arang, Vice Governor Rene, Mayor Baba, Dr. Joseph Freyberg, and my staff, thank you for the generosity of their time and support for the school. The positions that are assumed today may have changed from treasurer to chairman. But for me, that much has changed. The entusiasmo, the dedication, and the commitment to serve remain steadfast as well. As one family, may we continue to work hand in hand, especially at the next time for the good of the school and the community. As we thank the good Lord or God for the opportunities given to serve us, let our service be always for His greater honor and glory. Thank you, station, and God bless us all.
Thank you so much, Engineer Albert, for your beautiful message. BWS PD is in good hands because our board trustees are always finding ways.
Thank you, ma'am. Before anything else, let me acknowledge our Governor, Prophet of Bohol, Governor Arjap, proudly represented by Vice Governor Rene Lopez Relampagos. Tagan atong sa masipampakpak manu. Bishop, the Dyessis of Taguilaran City, Most Reverend Abel Uy. Tagan atong sa masipampakpak. Our Assistant Schools Division Superintendent, Dr. Casiana Cameret. Tagan atong sa masipampakpak. And the reason why we are all here today, our newly elected Board of Trustees, led by our newly elected Chairman, Engineer Albert Uy. Tagan atong sa masipampakpak. We also have the former City Councilor, Mam Albert L. Alba. Tagan atong sa masipampakpak. Great School Principal, my daughter's favorite, Mamilinda Sabaricos. Tagan atong sa masipampakpak. Free Elementary Principal, Mam Gemma Denhyo. A big round of applause, please. Head of administrative team, led by Mr. Raul Deloso. Tagan atong sa masipampakpak. Faculty and teaching staff, guests, and visitors to all of us here in Nagatunlan. Mayong bunda. Galoyanaman, mayong bunda. Together with my wife, First Lady Jan Yang, we would like to congratulate the new set of officers led by Engineer Albert Uy. I know that you have big shoes to fill, especially at this time of pandemic, and next year we will be trying to do our face-to-face classes again. And let me share with you that Bohol Wisdom School is one of the schools that we try to model with Taguilaran City with some of our projects. Na pinanganang sumukunabot ang ato ang tapo, lakop ka Taguilaran City College with a capacity of 8,000 people isumtan na nato in front of Taguilaran City College tungod na kayo ng courage that it is ato ang Bohol Wisdom School gymnasium. I know that a lot of people are privileged enough to enroll at a private institution. That is why we try na mag-experience ang ato ang public schools ang ato ang isinanti na mag-experience o private school facilities. First, ang ato ang buhat is masakakin ang ato ang special education fund. When we stepped in as the premier last 4,013, our special education fund was only 25 million pesos. But now, our special education fund is now up to 80 million pesos. Napupuyung kayo na si Ausaka. That is why, together with Taguilaran City Schools Division, DEEPED Taguilaran City will give out our programs and projects to the different schools of Taguilaran City. Sa una, ang mga public schools nato wala 'yung mga gwaranya. Sa nato, ipambutangan ni sila ang mga security guards. Sa nato, ipambutangan ni ang ato ang mga schoolso, mga CCTVs. And, karoon nasumtan na ginato before the pandemic, we were able to put up air conditioning units to two public schools sa Taguilaran City. And this year, magtukang napunta o kuno ang mga public schools na mga aircon na ginato din eh sa Taguilaran City. And of course, in partnership with National DEEPED, tungod kayo ang Yusek nato sa DEEPED is very close with our family. Si Yusek Rex, si Escobedo. Nakadawat tago ongoing na ang ato project karoon for Taguilaran City of over 100 million pesos ang additional classrooms nato din eh sa ato ang Tagpayan sa Taguilaran. So let's assure that the City Government of Taguilaran will be in full support of the new Board of Directors and our new Chairman of Bohol Wisdom School. Na agitan na mitrin na kasubatan and as continue to be partners for progress. And tungod kayo tungo brakos akri, 3D's of Bohol Wisdom School. Wa ko kibao, unsa Chinese sa asens o pabor, pero kibao kamusote o wa ayin. Again, mayong mayong tagan atong talan.
Thank you so much, Bishop Abet. Thank you so much, Bishop Deloso. Once again, we call Vice Governor.
... Our Bishop, the Dyessis of Taguilaran, Bishop Albert Uy. Ang ato na mahal-mahahan sa Tagpayan, sa Taguilaran, na naamataron na karoon sa ilang ato loh. Atos ang termino, din eh sa Tagpayan. The love City Mayor, Mamayak. Ang ato na bat o la, Tagpayan, City Chair, President, Chairman, sa Board of Trustees, din eh sa ato, ato na mahahan sa Bohol Wisdom School, Engineer Albert and Uy. Ang ato na sinongyanan sa Department of Education, si Doctor Cameret. Ang ato namang distinguished among officers and members on the Board of Trustees of Bohol Wisdom School. Ang ato namang heads and assistants at the Department of Bohol Wisdom School, among the ato of the teaching staff. Ang ato namang two of the cabinetary, unya na amay na comments ang ato ang groupiaos sa Department of Education. We will have citizens from training cap one. Unya ang ato na fourth grade high school, Igor yun na sila na palakamol ang mga officer. No, para estay ngayon, kung ano, kaya nga, na parito, pey, saniya, ato na ona. Bata dyan, aw, dyan, aw, maturat. Kaya, nakabon na, panahon na, asya, kito, komisibo, salato, kioses. Mga mga kailangan sa payan, asya, mga ato, kailangan sa payan, din eh si Bishop Abet, repetent, such, ayun, po, eh, no? Napuntang, ngayon, ang kito. Muna, katana, sa kioses, sa Taguilaran, sige, pay, ang ato, to, 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 sa, sa, komisibo, sa mga Bishop, ato, sa, sa, ngayon. May ikotan, ato, mga amilo, Amerikanan, sa Bohol Wisdom School, sa Pitasaput Chairman, no? Kaya, nagimbitaw, na, no, na, kumali ko, matatampok ko, ng hilangan, very important, ang ibig, very unfortunately, ona, si, no, ka, na ay kaya, to meet back the people in four months, sa, and the people from, ah, the bar. But just the same, I will be sure.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Our distinguished guests, Vice Governor of the Department of Law, Mary Superscript, admitting, Deputy Office Relampagos, representing the government, the head of the Department of Public Health, Honorable Albert C. Yap, Taguilaran City Mayor, Honorable John Gisner Baba Eriap, Deputy President of Taguilaran City Schools Division, headed by Doctor Casiana Cameret, together with Doctor Esther Artagan. Our inapun officer, Bishop, the Dyessis of Taguilaran, Most Reverend Alberto S. Uy, PD. Members of the Board of Trustees of Bohol Wisdom School, and whites present, especially the inductees, members of the mistaken here, headed by Doctor Robert H. Deloso, the Bohol Wisdom School, Mathaniya St. Visitors, and all of them. Good morning, Jawsang Paul. First of all, I would thank you for joining us in this gathering. Big part of our success, a man who spent the extreme time with the school, the induction to office of the new officers, and the presentation of the other members of the Board of Trustees of the school. Allow me to rally everyone here to express our special congratulations to these incredible gentlemen, I think, with a very long love. I hope everyone who has been in this institution since 1982 and onward until now would agree that there have been six to seven times, if I may state it, changes in leadership and even officers of the Bohol Wisdom School Board of Trustees. But this is the first time that the induction ceremony is done. I beg you, please do not ask why. Maybe you say, maybe it's by virtue of some lucky numbers. Mr. Albert Uy happens to be the seventh elected Chairman of the Board of Trustees of Bohol Wisdom School. But we don't believe in lucky numbers. I don't believe in lucky numbers. Let us just try it this way. We do it now because it is the right thing to do. I consider it as doing the right thing in the right way. No other worship is taught with an appropriate ceremony to impress upon them the seriousness of their undertaking. Again, congratulations to the inductees. And thank you for accepting your responsibilities to carry on towards the end of the head, always bearing with a light and wisdom, nurturing the world to be embalmed with the bonds of love, respect, eternity, and stewardship to become enlightened, empowered, successful, effective, and a grateful citizen of our local, national, and global community. This induction ceremony is significant, especially in these times where the threat of the break of COVID-19 is just lurking around each one of us. The challenges throughout the school, like BWS, is even greater. Bohol Wisdom School is mature and consistent, efficient, and efficient. Ever since its founding days, spearheaded by the Filipino-Chinese fondness and those powerful to take the baton, who are not to go now. They left the negative stress, the beauty, the entertainment, the honesty, and the bad, even the longing for parents. We are still taking the choice to do the right thing in the right way. And in the course of our doing so, let's follow that in like me, the fruit of God in the book of Proverbs, Chapter 3, Verses 26 to 25, and recall from a Hebrew scripture, it says, "And whatever you do, do faithfully as unto the Lord and act as men." Knowing that, from the Lord, you will receive the reward of the earth and earth, for you serve alone Christ. But he who does wrong will be paid for what he has done. And there is no fresh out. It has been honored to be a person of homage and great individuals to be able to present honors like this before you. On behalf of BWS family, thank you, and I wish you all a good evening. Thank you so much, Bishop Abet. Before... Before the off-guessing place, we will still have our photo of the beautiful houses of our workers' business.